And it's working. So, because we have three commissioners here, we need to make this an open public meeting. So I will call the meeting to order at nine, excuse me, 8:40?
Seven.
Seven. I will take notes, call to order. The agenda for today is we're here with a potential candidate for the director's position, Ricardo Frietas. Say that right, correctly, Ricardo?
No.
No. I'm sorry.
Is it the Frietas?
Frietas.
Okay, yeah, 'cause the E before the I. Sorry, anyway.
Exactly. So, thank you Ricardo for coming all the way up from Spasibo, California. He spent yesterday with, touring the facility, meeting different members of the senior staff and also board members, and we'll finish up today doing so. We take this morning to ask him questions in general as a group and to finish off the interview process with Ricardo. So, that being said, I'm now going to open up the floor to the other commissioners for any other questions or comments that they have for Ricardo. Go ahead.
Okay, I don't know, what my hope originally was to do here was to talk about some work products, and so I don't know if you, I don't know if we have that, or just talk about a, you know, I'd like to hear more about, so we touched on some things in our Skype interview about process improvement, you know, I know one of the things that we heard consistently was that you took your pool from the red to the black, and so I think we'd like to hear either about that or about some program that you instituted kind of from beginning to end in terms of the things like the budget and project planning.
I started in Spasibo in February of '04, and the pool was closed for four months because they were doing major work, doing surfacing and changing some pipes and things like that. And I hired there and the situation was very slim and, how I say, the number of people were very limited.
In terms of patrons?
Patrons, because for four months it was closed.
Oh, okay.
And basically my work was to turn around the facility and make the facility work with the budget you have and don't spend more of you have. And far looking, looking the small things, looking where we spend the money, how we spend the money, and things like that was my first work. And I give you example, we had contacted with a supply company, and the supply company would charge us probably fifteen hundred dollars a month for toilet paper and fans and things like that. I give you example, I had staples for five or six years after the company left. And the bills were on winter for like seven hundred dollars, on summer for like fifteen hundred dollars, and this was eleven years ago. And when the supplies were over because we were diminished number, we start looking and the Costco was substantial cheaper than them. And one time, and also they had this soap system to build your, make your own soap for the cleaning and all that stuff. And the guy came here, six months after I quit with them, nobody show up, so I believe they were not coming, and the guy showed up to me and told, "Oh, you don't want to still stay in business with me? Show me the numbers, I will check it out with other company and check it out." I'm there, the guy never can show up again because I told I was going to Costco, and that, they never show up. And that's one of the things we did. Another thing we did is we did an energy plan, and we put solar panels and we changed the motor of the facility, and that substantial catalog bill of mostly utility bill, the GND, electrical, like we save like probably five or six thousand kilowatts a month now with that improvement. And enough I stayed looking on the staff, how much staff we need and how much stuff we should use on the facility and things like that, and we have to a good term, you know.
And so for an example of the solar panels, how did you, so just to drill down on just that as an example a little bit more, how did you decide that was the right, so kind of how did, take us through that a little bit in terms of how did you decide that was the right approach?
The city was doing that in almost, the city owns the building, and the city was doing that for all the buildings in town. So they had this consulting guy from the Sonoma State, Sonoma City nearby, and he did a study, and the city owned the building, but we put the money, we had a loan from with the city, and, and we had a cutback from the state, again from the state, and the budget probably would cost two hundred and sixty thousand and cost us eighty-two thousand.
And that eighty-two thousand, sorry for interrupting, but that eighty-two thousand, how did you find?
Sixty-two thousand was for the solar panels, and ten or fifteen was for the VFD, the variable speed. And how we found that, we did fundraising with the customers, and that was not much, we probably made twenty thousand dollars from that, sixty-two thousand from that. And we had again, on the beginning with the city, for the forty-six thousand dollars and no more. And we're paying like two hundred, ten hundred dollars a month for the first couple years. And since we were making money, under thirty years, I had those checks and they all surprised. You were paying this? You sure? Yes. And we paid the solar panels right away. And they're there, and it's been interesting because people think it's for hitting the pool, but it's not, it's for the pumps and everything, because you have a strong engine motor on the pool, that thing spines a lot of energy. And it's funny how succeeded. The major going very fast. And the biggest problem-
It does, yes.
The biggest problem-
Way fast.
The biggest problem with all these electrical companies, they give you a break if you use the washing machine at seven or eight at night and all that stuff, but I hear we cannot do that because would be great if we could cut the power of the situation when we have fifty kids on the pool, but it's impossible against the law, and we have situation. So, when is the most expensive time is when we pay, we pay the big bucks is when we need to pay the big bucks because we can't install on the machine. But we need play the game. One thing we did before was cutting the pumps at night, is nothing on the house code to cut the pumps at night and see if was a savings, but was not a savings because especially when alcohol is out there, the water will cool down too much and will be too expensive to put back on, to put back the heater, so will be not cost efficient, attack efficient. So, it's a lot of making adjustments to make the same work the best you can. And, you know, every, every lane in the, any pool is a little bit different, and it's a project, can be done, and our, we have to organize that. But some pools, indoor pools now is like they cover the pool with the covers. I don't know here if it's will be efficient or not. Some pool, I don't know what they do here in Washington, but in some pools now, they do that, they cover the pool to see if they don't lose the heating.
The heat at night.
Yeah. I don't know if it will be efficient or not.
And can you, just do you have an estimate, like in terms of how much that project saved? The pool either on, like either in energy on a monthly basis or?
Using the solar panels?
Right, and the motor, yeah.
We save around, our bill before was like around twelve thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand kilowatts, and we now we have seven, six, seven, eight thousand kilowatts. They save around forty percent.
Forty percent?
Yeah.
Wow, that's good savings.
Yeah. And the good thing of solar, here I know you guys don't understand, but the good thing on solar, it's there.
Yes.
And we, we will come down, and that's it. We don't do anything else there. And sometimes we need to bring down, but once in a while, that's it. But I gave you a example last night on the, on the dinners, the variable speed dive. We had that seen broken during the financial crisis, and the city then they had money to buy, to replace, and just that was around two thousand kilowatts a month. We were putting more.
Wow.
So, it's a big, it's just a small machine makes the motor to work faster and smarter. And that, just that was two thousand kilowatts.
So if one piece goes down, it shows how the impact is, yeah?
I looked at the bill and I saw, it's two more, two thousand more, I called the superintendent of public work, and said, "So what's going on there?" I don't have money to buy it. We wait until probably six months to, till the budget, new budget will pay and they have some money there.
And you talked about fundraising too. What kind of things did you do to fundraise?
We had this big solar panel, the size of a solar panel with a small, small squares, like each square was a solar panel, and we sold the solar panels. And we put a number of five hundred dollars for a solar panel, and we have probably thirty donors, thirty main donors, and that Wednesday bought solar panels. We had multiple donations for the solar panels, some groups bought like this one team, like one, Aqua Hobbies, trying to all together, like that one, and things like that. And we, we made a plaque, it's like a wave, and it's placed on a wall, and it will be there forever. It's like a nice, a nice-
Thank you.
Wave, nice wave with symbols of it. So we tried to, to play a little bit, so it was a wave with the names of the people. And, yeah, I actually, the solar panels were completely paid for a long time, but we had this guy came to me one time a few months ago, and he donated the solar panel, many his money and stuff. So I told I will put his name there, and he also said he worked for Chevron, and they do a match. A match, and I'm waiting for the five hundred dollars from Chevron. Let's see.
Be nice.
Yeah, so things like that, and it's, it's, since we're in our market, it's common, not common, but sometimes it happens, have people work in large companies, they have foundations, and if you put a little bit money, every month from your paycheck, they match, and that's great, because this money shows up every couple months, and it's nice.
How much would you say, just out of curiosity, with that sort of program, how much are you getting from like corporate matching?
Since we don't need that much, because we, we have full support, our campaign, it's, our membership campaign is not that much. We probably make two thousand dollars a year. It's not that much, and like, we have other nonprofits in town, like the Senior Center and the Committee Center, the Dark Center, that ones they, they would bless because they need for operational costs. So they, they work hard, they do foreign talents and things like that, and we don't do because it's not needed, you know. When I hire a pool, they need, they have this, they try to do this fifteen thousand dollars, how I say, fifteen thousand dollars for the, they have, fifteen thousand dollars they have been, have for, because they feel that it was fifteen thousand all the year.
And were those successful?
It was before me, I think they had some money there.
Yeah.
I don't know how successful they were, because, and, you know, all this gauzes and all these dives, it's very nice when the financial status of the country is in good condition. If goes bad, the manager, and this, this organization thing down, they suffer a lot doing the financial class, and it's a cycle.
Yep.
Ups and downs, and happen a lot, and you cannot, you cannot stay with that.
Yeah.
What's approximately, what's your overall budget for the year?
Last year we did two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Is your overall budget including your operating costs?
Operating costs.
Okay.
My operating cost was around, which is a little bit less than ten hundred thousand. But I cannot count the city, what the city spends.
Okay, and that actually, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and the city maintains the building and the infrastructure, correct?
As you said.
That, that's their role anyway.
It's what they're supposed to pay for, right?
Yeah, so they, they tie their best to do improvements, and as I said yesterday, they probably spent on the last ten years, probably two hundred thousand dollars, and we probably spent another two hundred thousand dollars in repairs and things like that. Like, we had a donation for the office, for my office and meeting room, and was there before I hired there, there were thirty-seven thousand dollars there to go to the office and meeting room, and we built that, it's like maybe a little bit smaller than this one. And we built that four days ago, and of course, what's that is sixty thousand dollars, or six to seventy thousand dollars. And everything you do in buildings and special buildings, the costs, it's not, not what you expect because you find three or four problems in the, when you fix, like, the wood is hot, or there's a leak on the roof, and the, it's not messing on the cold, you need to fix everything. Like, we have, we have this thing to build our lockens, enlarge our lockens or pushers, and it's not easy then because everything costs, I'm unaware, and in nineteen eighty everything was ABA, and now nothing is ABA, and if you touch, if you enlarge something, you need to figure out the ABA thing, so what is a, maybe two hundred square feet improvement will cost maybe five hundred thousand dollars or something like that. So it's, it's difficult to fix stuff fast because it will cost a lot.
And how do you, so in that relationship between the pool and the city, how do you get things, what's the process for you to get improvements?
They have their own agenda, and they-
What?
They, they have these projects.
We're shocked.
They have these budgets, and they fix what they think is more important with my support and my knowledge, and more and more they contact me and ask questions. Example, if something, something is broken, I, if I cannot fix, I tie my best to don't call them to fix that.
Sure.
If I can fix, I will fix. It's like, it's a plumbing problem, I don't want to fill, and I call them, and they try to fix, or a broken light, and I, I, I'm a Portuguese guy, I know to tape and things like that, and other stuff, I, I'm not that talented, and like a blast or other things, plastic things, I cannot change, I'm afraid to change things like that, so I call them and it's in the met the sky.
I think we call that healthy respect.
Yes.
Right?
I, since so far, the relationship is being stronger, and they see, now we see much more the importance of the pool than before. Their goal, many times the goal was to put a piping line there, would be great because they will not have problems, because they always think the short vision is, this guys is the problem makers, we need to, and we need to go there every day to check it out the pool, and once the, the water is not in good temperature, where people call the public work superintendent.
Oh, yes.
If the lifts, we have this new lift, and the lift, like everything new, has some glitches, they call a city council, and when they have to pour, the city council looking for the lift, and it seems like that, and they really, they don't have anything to say because they didn't bought them, but in the end they own the building and all that stuff, and we need to be very nice to them because they, they own the building, and we need them because major projects, they need, we need them.
Right.
So, you know, that's, I think if you work with them and take them well, it's better. Some of you who work in high forces, you know how important it is to connect all the dots. It's a part of, of the game now.
And so you've built, what I heard was you built that relationship with the city, it wasn't, there wasn't a good relationship when you started, and you've built it since 2004?
It was not a bad relationship.
Right.
It was a friendship of these guys double.
Right.
And I had like this, maybe like you guys told me, like maybe a similar situation of you guys have, the, they were probably ten, between ninety-five and oh-four, probably they have ten managers. And one thing that was funny before you guys saw the video of the city council, I found on the reports, on archive, I found these articles, and they were saying, "Oh, the pool is in red, it's probably closing next week." Or some articles in nineteen ninety-nine or something like that. And I would go to the city council every year for a presentation, and I would show that, that's what I think, or like, have a vision for them, how bad was, and now we, you guys never see us on the newspaper, and how positive is the pool for the people because if you don't have any news on the newspaper, it's good news.
That's right.
And it's what the message we need to pass. And it's happened in last eleven years. A few news we have on newspapers, some problems we have at the pool, and they show, they show on the newspaper, but no news of we are in red, we are closing next week, or the pool is closed because of pump smoke, and we have two weeks left. So, and then the thing is, if you pass the message well, people understand that the problem, like if the pool breaks and the pump is not working, and you need to cause, if you pass the message, right, this is the problem, next week, or tomorrow, we are working on that twenty-four seven, and maybe tomorrow will be fixed, and things like that. But with a good positive way, message pass better than the damage. Of course, you always have it, once they all, like the pool.
So if I may ask you, if you look at O'Harvey right now, because you kind of, you commented maybe thinking of this, some of the negativity in the community toward the view of the Park and Rec district over the past few years, some of that's been negative, and it's been played out in the newspapers, and you know, the, the one thing I think we're needing is someone who can come in and kind of mend some of that, and to bring people together with fresh ideas, and I see you've been involved with the Chamber of Commerce, I've seen some programs that you started, I think I see one online, where you started an at-risk, a swimming instruction program for at-risk children, I believe?
Yeah, swimming lessons for Latinos.
Yes, and then I know you started up water polo waves. When you were, if you look at our facility, and you look at the dynamics going on, I'm sure you read some of the news about the Park and Rec. What, if you were to be our director, how would you reach out to our community to try to bring this together and to change that view of the Park and Rec district?
First is take the Park and Recs from the newspapers, it's not, that was, we are here to give new, good news, we are here to what kind of positive way, and what We are here to what, and the positive way, and when just the newspaper is mostly negative. And I don't have any problem with the newspaper, they, they do a very good job. And the second, I think we should reach the schools, the senior centers, we have a senior center just next door. We should partner, partner with them, we should partner with the, the place like you guys are doing now. And with the Chamber of Commerce, with the business in town, with other towns, because we are the only one that has a swimming pool, so, you could, I see they have a hospital in the pool.
Yep.
They probably don't have a swimming pool, they probably could come here to do their physiotherapy classes or something like that. And, like, when we have, you are the only one on the, only one in town, you, you have a lot of possibilities. And I, my understanding, this town is very small, because always, I, 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 maybe there is people. So I have the feeling we could have much more childrens wanting to swim here or something like that. I, I don't know, maybe I'm doing a self, I don't idea, so the swimming lesson program, but I don't know. But one of the important things, and the, the most important thing of the swimming pool is to teach water safety. And it's part of, um, we should have like, um, the statements of what the Cats Department and the swimming pool should do for the community, and, and the swimming lessons is the most important part. This way we will teach the people to be safe, and Downing is the second cause of that in the nation. So, in kids, so, it's, it's more than cancer. Fortunately, so, so, and then if you Google, Google news, if you Google, uh, Google swimming pools, like, uh, news of swimming pools at Google. Every day, you have one there. And many times, I don't know what's the demographic of private swimming pools in house, probably not that many. But go to Sokal and the areas like that, and the Florida, those like that. Uh, uh, what you call, back to the complex, they are very bad. And you know, and few things make the, the difference. I, I know I'll go to the city council two times a year, and there, we, all this big time. One, one is for the, the presentation, for one as you guys saw. And another one is, uh, the, my, in America, it's the Downing prevention mark. And at that time, I go to the city council, it's because this, before, they had a, they had a planning, planning, uh, building office. But they didn't did anything like that, but it's these small things, you go there, make the people know what is a swimming. It's a small paper, but that small paper is very important on the, and I go there, I do my two or three minutes speech, and that's it on that day. They have more than ten proclamations, but just the, just for them to aware, oh, yeah, we have that, and, and, but I have a good relationship with the fire chief, and the fire chief, they have a, like a panel to announce things on the fire department. And he puts a, all month of my water sa- uh, water safety month, uh, swimming lessons, I type school and our phone number there. And just that, it's on the main stage, so gives us a, a good PR. Of course, I, I do understand, I do, and in the middle of the night, I go there, and I put signs all over the town, and something like that. But here, I didn't sign so many signs in, but it's possible we have somewhere it's a good sign, like for events or that. I put my sign there, swimming lessons, and, and once in a while, the, the planning bureau calls me. You know, I think I, that sign don't have any date, because, uh, it's not the event if you don't have a date, and they tend to, water safety is the event, is every two weeks we have a different event. So my compromise with the, we need to put a, a date, so, when I can, I go back, I need to put a date there. So, of course, I might will complain.
No, somebody was complaining?
Strangely, he knew where the sign came from.
Yeah. Some signs that are sneaky, but I,
Exactly, you give yourself up.
Yeah.
In the name of safety.
And you said, you said about Chamber of Commerce, I'm, I'm a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, they would like me to be a board member. And it's good and bad, it's, like, you and the board love something, and good things are present. Um, it's, it's not so simple, they know, people know who I am, so it's good when they're, like, we have, I have a personal relationship with the city council. And something like that, because they know me from these, something like that. Some people say, oh, you are highly familiar, no, I don't have that, I think we do.
I don't blame you.
I just, I have a question to go back to something you talked about, which sounded something familiar here, related to the, um, the pool temperature.
Yeah, water pool.
And, and so, um, not surprisingly, we have an ongoing, um, let's call it a debate, where, um, you know, the, the public would like, the, um, the general public, I would say, would like the pool to be warmer, and the, the, the swim team and the master swimmers would like it to be cooler. Um, I don't think any of that's surprising.
And the aerobics instructors would like it to be cool. I actually had one, I had one this morning tell me that it was perfect after they started moving, but if it was warmer, they'd all be sweating.
Hmm, interesting, that's new data.
Yes, fresh.
And there we go, exactly, fresh data. Um, and so how do you, um, it, it sounds like that's something that, that either has been or is ongoing for you, how do you deal with that?
We have a policy. And our goal is to have a water that you want, and can have a variation between eighty and eighty. And the policy is on our side, yeah. And we try to take the temperature often and put on wood on the, on the board. And the problem is, problem is, um, the variation of temperature, here is less because it's indoor pool. And mostly of the time is, is similar, but probably here is, it's warmer than on the deeper side. Because the jets come from the bottom, so it's less water, who can pump the button to the top. And the temperature on the pool is different than the temperature on the heating on the maintenance room, because the water comes from the bottom after. And does a hundred pool, and it's different. But, and outdoor pool, indoor pool is easier to maintain the temperature than outdoor. Because I cannot control if it's thirty-five degrees outside, the water is, is much warmer than it is. And our, but main problem is changing seasons, like, at this time of the year, and also on, um, in October, when we have like forty degrees differences, more doing the column, the low and high. And the, the machines have different readings, and after tells the heater to work less or more. So it's difficult to, to keep the pool. And the latest, I, some, some ladies want to buy a, a display thermometer.
Yes, I'm laughing because we had the same, go ahead, I'm sorry, we had the same thing, yes.
To give a temperature every five seconds or five minutes. And with POGS, and that, it's a French company. And I, I know it's coming from the next world, so I, I started investigating. And they didn't send me a technical information, how it think works. Because, you know, any of these, um, I have like teakoparmeters, and they all give you different temperatures.
That's true, yeah.
And I, I guarantee the temperature here is different than, uh, from, from. Uh, we, we, what we do have, we have a lot of people using small glass tools and things like that, uh, uh, and, many times, how you work makes the, the difference, you know? But I understand that a part of the, is hard sometimes, and I have complained about that.
Why, why do you, why does your pool choose eighty-one degrees?
It's a compromise between, uh, what the competitive swimmers and the aquatics, aquatic. And it's funny, I have a aquatic class called Water Gentle, and I have much less problems with that people than aquatics. And Water Gentle people, people with the tights and something like that, and they know really they need that. So, yeah, it's a compromise. Because when I have there was eighty or seventy-nine point five, and that's not possible.
Yeah, that is the ongoing discussion here, because your elderly people and your, your small children, they want those warmer temperatures. Like, like Sean said, or I think, or Wendy, the swim team wants it like, eighty to eighty-one temperature. I think lap swimmers wanted there. I know that the older, uh, elderly ladies that came, they are very, they want that temperature eighty-four.
Oh, yes.
Most of the time, it's more eighty-six, eighty-five, eighty-six. And though,
Well, they feel they're compromised.
I found, I found this study, and each degree you have is ten minutes amount of experience.
Yes.
How much is one degree?
We have a study, I, I found, I think was out of, like, it was like, on the end of it was like twelve thousand dollars or something.
Oh. Twelve thousand dollars, it's not the same period.
So, and I have the feeling, one of, one of the things that's more that is changing, if, if it's more constant, the people are better. Then it goes ups and downs.
Right.
Because if it's up, they think that's the eighty-two or eighty-one, and many times it's not. It's what I say to them, is the temperature is between eighty and eighty-two, and I'm very sure it's that. But sometimes, it's higher than eighty-five. And that's a problem, because they say that's like,
That's normal.
I, I know, and I know some days are warmer than other days, for, how, when we put the covers on the pool and things like that, makes the difference. Like, I know Mondays is normal warmer than other days, and Sundays, because we close over, and we open later Sundays, so.
The cover stays on, right?
Affects a little bit, and, and I know if the heaters are on, and the, the heating cans, people think the water is warm.
How big is your staff?
Very small on winter, very light summer. I probably, I assume I have a hundred sixty. On winter, I probably twenty working, but not much. I'm very flexible with them, so they, some people work there, we need to, sometimes they work. So I have, I have teakoparmeters for the aquatic classes. And I, I do have the, the manual startings process.
And so I know we talked about this a little bit last time, but have you, um, so, the bond, um, we, we talked a little bit, and, and you kind of talked about the image. You know, having a good image will help you pass a bond. Um, just, can you talk a little bit more about your experience, how it relates to actually that, that levy process?
I don't have any experience with that.
Okay.
Basically, I see, I, I vote sometimes on them.
There you go.
And that's the only experience I have with them.
Okay.
My, we are not a, a, a district, we are a nonprofit, so.
So your funding actually comes through the city, or it comes?
From what you try to.
Self-sustaining.
Okay.
It's a dual-funded facility, the way I understood it, it's dual-funded, so the building is, belongs to the city?
I don't have any funding for operational costs.
Okay.
I have some funding, the city supports the building.
Right.
Okay, so you effectively have a roof and a, and a facility, but it's yours to fund and run? Yeah, okay.
It's unique.
Yes.
Yeah.
What we would need, uh, not many pools can say, we don't have any money for our personnel costs.
That's true.
Let me go right.
No, go ahead, go ahead, I'm fine, I'm just.
So you've had, uh, maybe, uh, a day to look around the pool and the facilities here, and ask questions, meet the senior staff, and notice that there's a difference between our district and your district. Um, and direct question, do you think your strengths and weaknesses play into being a good director for our district?
I think so. I think, uh, I'm, I have knowledge in aquatics, and this district is big with aquatics. And my experience with people helps to running of the facility. I think so.
Okay, thank you.
When you, when you look at our facility here, are you thinking that we need to work on, that, you know, I mean, I know it's kind of an aging facility, I mean, do you have any ideas?
Um, yes.
That's what I would like to hear.
Um, tends it to public meeting?
It is a public meeting, um,
I shouldn't.
Okay.
I shouldn't say things.
Okay, that's fine, I respect that, very much.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Any further questions from the board, for Ricardo?
I can't ask you, it's O'Carver, where do you take that O'Carver?
It's a nice town, I like, I see game, I, we don't see much game where I am. I still, I like to see the game, and it's also a nice town. I see, I like to see the game and it's also a nice town.
Ricardo, do you have any questions for the board or the interim director at this time that we may answer for you?
I, I have been asking questions mostly all yesterday, all day yesterday, so I'm, I'm ahead now, I think that you know much
Okay.
About the district. And I don't have many questions.
All right.
If we don't have anything else?
Do we want to discuss the process going forward?
We could definitely do that. I, I have to unfortunately take a backseat as I was not here for last month's meeting, so I apologize. I know we, we had to discuss bringing, after we had met for the interview, we discussed bringing Ricardo up here. And
We didn't really, there was
There was no
Nope.
Further discussion on where to go after this, it was more to see if this was a good fit, because we all agreed that this was very important to get this right. So, if you, go ahead.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to kind of think through, yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna do two things here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wuss out, give myself a five-minute recess
Okay.
So that I have a chance to get my thoughts together. And I actually can feel myself getting ready to have a little coffin fit and since I've already hacked into the recorder once, I'd like to not do it again. So if everybody doesn't mind, I'd like to take a, two times, I'd like to take a quick five-minute recess. All right, thank you.
I'm just trying to think through and, sorry, just
No, I'm not saying. Oh, I'm sorry, did I drop the ball?
That's awesome. So what's going on down there, you two?
Um, so the call to meeting back in order, good, good point, Steve, it's nine forty-six AM. So we need to discuss the next part of the process. I know Donna Su, the, the fourth commissioner, wants to talk to you. And in all fairness to you and her, we, we need to let that happen. And then we need to get her feedback. And at the same time, we don't want to leave you waiting in the wings with what's going to happen next. So hopefully this week you'll have a chance to contact Donna Su. And if we do that, we will need to call a special meeting to discuss everything.
Can we shoot for Friday?
For this Friday, the fifth? I think that's
Because I, I really don't want to make you wait through the week.
No, I, I agree. Can, can, do you have time this week, let me ask you, do you have time this week to contact Donna Su and get in touch with her and have a discussion? Okay, so if we have a special meeting Friday afternoon, do you have time? Steve, do you have time?
Uh, I have time, I have time, yes.
Okay, so if we, is there a better time that works for everybody? Let me ask you this. Friday after Friday, anytime, I'm off, so.
I don't know about Wendy's work schedule, you work on violin.
No, I don't.
I thought you did.
I work at home.
There you go, Wednesday, how about Friday at one o'clock?
So we'll, we'll call a special meeting Friday at one o'clock. And then what we'll do is we'll take all the information together and we'll get back to you after that special meeting. All right? That way everybody and you know what's on the radar and we'll make a decision then. Do you have any final questions for us, Ricardo?
What's, when you guys want, what's the, what's the plan if I accept the job?
If, 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 if everything falls into place, we
Because I'm, I'm starting at the summer season and I don't want to leave the pool in a tight boat, when the pool lights
And, and you know what, and that speaks volumes, thank you, that speaks volumes to your character and your dedication where you, right, and if you accept, if we made an offer and if you accepted, what type of timeframe would you be looking at to leave the pool you're currently at?
My feelings is maybe August, end of August, beginning of September.
To, to make a transition during the changing season?
Yes.
Which would make sense for all parties involved, okay.
I found that because another thing is I have a big plan to Portugal and I, I want to that before I commit because probably I don't have my commission.
All right. Since we're all in the same room, I'm gonna take the opportunity to look past my fellow commissioner, to the interim director and say, would you be a minimal to such a plan if it came into effect?
Of course.
Okay, so we know the pieces are in place and actually business-wise, that does make sense, not only for our district, but for the district you're currently at, so we don't leave another district in a lurch, which we don't want to do, we understand that pain. So I think that would be more than acceptable. So what we'll do then is we will call for a special meeting on Friday and my, my phone just blanked, can you?
Oh, it's the twelfth.
The fifth?
The twelfth, or, oh, sorry, yes, sorry. You had, yes.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
I had it circled, you had it, yeah.
Friday the fifth at thirteen hundred, sorry, one o'clock. And after Ricardo has a chance to talk to Commissioner Holly and then we have a chance to get feedback from Donna Su. And then Friday afternoon, hopefully we'll be contacting you, we will contact you one way or the other, so that you're not left wondering what happened. All right, Ricardo, thank you very, very, very much for making the trip up and for your time.
I would like to make a motion to reject.
Ten, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passing in.